Called order to city council work session for CDB's Grand Forks for June 13th, 2023. Let's see, clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riepel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Fanner.
Here.
Ben Pakchewinski.
Here.
Dale Holmes.
Here.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Karen Peterson.
Deputeroom quorum number one, 2022 audit presentation. We have Brian from Brady Martz here and Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to introduce Brian Opso. He is a partner at Brady Martz and he was in charge of our audit this year. So this is new for him, a new year with us, and thank you, Brian.
Yes, thank you. So everybody, I believe, got sent the final PDF here very recently. There wasn't a big change from what you received on Friday from the draft, but I will go through the report that got sent out today. So I'll do my best because I'm working off a page numbers and you'll have PDF page numbers. So let me know if you need me to slow down because I tend to go through things relatively quick. So first thing I guess I'll go through is the changes from last year to this year. As far as the audit is concerned, there was a new lease standard adopted this year which required, in the past, there used to be two different types of leases, operating leases and capital leases. And capital leases, you would set up on your statement of net position, depreciate them just like capital assets, and then you'd have a lease liability on the books. Then there was an operating lease, like leasing a building or equipment from somebody else, and that used to be just footnoted. It would never find its way to the financial statement. So that is a change this year is that now it's just called leases. Everything, whether it was a capital lease or operating lease in the past, it's now called leases. So I'll probably very quickly show you kind of what changed. Really nothing on a net balance or net position number, but that is something new this year. The other thing is the estimates within the financial statements due to your involvement in pension plans, et cetera. We do have some relatively large liabilities on the books for those. Those are subject to change based off of actuarial assumptions, but it's really your piece of the pie, so to speak, on the unfunded liability of PERA, for example. So those funds are unfunded, or those pension plans are unfunded at the state level. Basically, you take your little piece of the pie and put it on the books. It's really a accounting exercise more than anything else, but that is subject to making your numbers swing pretty heavily on the statement of net position. So I wanted to point that out. The other thing that you would have had last year that you don't have this year is a single audit. So federal dollars, once you spend over $750,000, you're required to have a single audit. This year, you did not meet that threshold. So I guess a few less pages than in years past from that. No difficulties performing the audit, no disagreements with management. So the process itself went very smooth. We appreciate everybody's help in getting it turned around, you know, within a few months. It's a lot. Obviously, these reports have a lot of information in them. So like I said, I'll go through the things relatively quick. It looks like the PDF page numbers are probably going to be seven off from what I say. So I will do my best to point that out. So PDF page seven is the letter of transmittal, and this is put together by management, just some high-level overview. This is required by the ACFER to get your certificate of excellence award. And basically through pages, page 14 is going to be that section. So it has some high-level data, some probably easy reading of the financial statements. It shows your certificate of achievement and excellence in financial reporting from the prior year as well as your organization chart. And so that is put together by management. Page 14 then would be your elected officials and administrative personnel, basically a summary of everybody at year end and when their terms are expiring. The next section is going to start the independent auditors' report. So on page 15 of the audit report is our opinion. And we, the report now starts with the opinion. So we've issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's considered a good or clean opinion that the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We do have that emphasis of matter paragraph in there due to the new lease standard. So we kind of point that out, that that's a change. And then in a nutshell, it's management's responsibility for the numbers in this statement, financial statements, as well as the footnotes. And so we, as auditors, then come through and ensure that those numbers and footnotes are fairly stated or reasonably stated in accordance with generally accepted kind of accounting principles. So we do help put them together, but you know, in the end, it is still management's responsibility. Starting on page 18 then through 25 is going to be what's known as management's discussion and analysis, a high-level overview of some condensed information. So this provides some comparative information from the, from last year to this year. It has some news and notes, and I think this is maybe the easiest read of the financial statements. If you're kind of looking for a snapshot of how the year went, it's not broken down into much detail, but it does kind of show the end numbers and goes through some of your fund accounting as well. So the first audited financial statement is actually on page 26. This is the statement of net position, pages 26 and 27. So if you look at the bottom of 27, you're going to see the final bottom, or the bottom number there is a statement of net, or total net position. Governmental activities has a little bit over $123.5 million. Business type activities, $73,800,000. And then you have the column all the way to the right, which is your component unit, which represents the EDA funds, a little over $9 million sitting in there. So once again, this is a full accrual financial statement. So this is going to include things like your capital assets, related depreciation. You'll also see on page 26, maybe a third of the way down the page, you're going to see a line for lease receivable. Also, within the capital assets is going to be the new lease assets. And then also included within the long-term liabilities is going to be those lease liabilities. And so those are footnoted in the back of the financial statements, but that would be something new this year. Overall, the difference of net position is pretty small. Moving then on to the next page, which would be 27, this is the statement of activities, which is the changes within the full accrual financial statements. So three lines from the bottom, you can see the overall change in net position. Governmental activities was down a little bit over $3.2 million. Business-type activities down a little bit less than $1.1 million. And just to kind of keep in mind, this does include things like your capital assets, depreciation, as well as the changes in the net pension liability. So those are going to swing into these numbers. It also includes some differences within, you know, the investment income for the business-type activities, et cetera, related to just market value changes during the year. The next section is going to be your fund statements, which should basically be your budgetary level of control over these statements. And I think they're a little bit easier to read, too. So if you start on page 29, this is going to be the balance sheet for the governmental funds. The first column of numbers there, two lines to the bottom, you can see the overall fund balance in the general fund, $6,501,303. The number right above that is your unassigned portion, $2 million, or excuse me, $6,385,780. That would be the number that you basically have available to spend. It's not tied down or earmarked for any special purposes. Taking that number, divided by your general fund expenditures, you're about 53.98%. And so I think you have some targets that you kind of look for, for the city, so.
Thirty-five between, the state says 35% to 50% fund balance.
Sure. So you're a little bit higher than that, but pretty close. And you know, certainly on the healthier side, I guess, as far as, as far as the numbers are concerned there. The other thing that we kind of look for is anything in the deficit. So you do have that current city projects fund, which is at a deficit $209,853. So just to kind of keep in mind that any time you see a deficit fund balance, that take a look to ensure that, you know, things are happening in the future, to either make those balances whole, like a transfer from another fund, or if there's anticipated new activity or revenues that are going to be making those funds whole. So just wanted to point that out. Flipping over a couple pages to page 31 then, this is going to be the changes in those governmental funds. Three lines from the bottom, you can see the general fund was down $358,156. This also includes, you know, your transfers out. And I think, you know, the, some of the transfers that were made this year were to help make some other funds whole, too. So overall transfers out was $743,615 out of that, out of that number. Capital projects fund was up $85,147. The current city projects fund was down $79,811. The 2017 assessment bonds fund was down $134,238. And then you have a big bucket of other non-major funds, which are broken out of the back of the financial statements. Those are down $422,527. The next, if you go a couple pages down, you're going to see the general fund budget to actual statement. So this would be on page 33. The column all the way to the right is going to be the variance with the final budget. So you can see, all in all, you're actually $112,920 better than budget. This was after transfers as well. So revenues are about $404,000 better. Your expenditures were $232,000 under budget. And then your transfers ended up being a little bit more than budget, $523,000. So the next section is going to be your business-type activities or your proprietary funds. And so if you look on the bottom of page 35, you're going to see the total net position within all of your enterprise funds. And so the first two funds, your electric and water, actually have a separate audit as well for water and light. Then you have sewage, storage water, or stormwater, commercial properties, and then your refuse fund. So all those funds, as you can see there, have positive net positions. So no red flags there as far as the audit is concerned. This does also include your net pension liability as well. So that kind of does bring down the numbers a little bit for, for really an accounting exercise. And so if you flip the page, the next page then, page 36, you're going to see the changes. Three lines to the bottom, electric fund was down about $863,000. That's after transfers out of $428,325. And then a pretty big swing in the interest income this year due to some market value changes. You know, those funds are intended to be held to maturity. So, you know, hopefully that's just, you know, a one-time swing if you hold them until they mature. And we'll maybe talk about that later, too. Sewage fund is down $185,673. Stormwater down $41,597. Commercial properties down $768. And your refuse fund was down $52,856. This also includes your depreciation expense, about $2.8 million. So that, that's a pretty big reason, too, why the numbers end up going down. If you look on the next page then, you're going to see the cash changes for the year. Three lines to the bottom, overall in your proprietary funds, the cash is down about $885,251. A lot of that was due to some acquisition of capital assets, et cetera. But, you know, overall, still sitting at about $4.8 million in cash in the proprietary funds. The next section is your footnotes to the financial statements. So lots of information on your significant accounting policies, information on your pension, as well as the lease liability, et cetera. Typically, don't go into much detail on that. So that runs through, I guess, pages 39 through 61. And then if you want to turn to page 71, as I mentioned earlier, we have the different breakouts for all of the different funds in the back of the financial statements. And so this starts that section where you're going to see all the different special revenue funds, debt service funds, caper projects funds. So if you're looking for a special fund and the activity, this is the section to start with. Like I said, looking for maybe negative fund balances, et cetera, I think you only have maybe a couple of funds that have that. So I'm not going to probably go through any detail on that. Then starts the statistical section. And so if you look, starting on page 107, there's going to be various statistical reports in this section that, that shows a variety of different things, like tax capacity, overlapping debt, lots of information on, on the city, population, that kind of thing. So has multiple years' worth of information in there. So it's kind of nice to kind of see where you're at, you know, 10 years ago as opposed to today, some things on your major customers, et cetera. So lots of activity in that section. We don't audit this section. We do tie it back to some other things, but it's technically not considered audited. And then finally, the last two pages in this report is the government auditing standards report combined with the Minnesota legal compliance report. And so this is basically a high-level overview of your internal control structure at the city, as well as the state of Minnesota provides a guide for us to go through things like pledged collateral, conflicts of interest, bid work. And this is a clean report. So there's no, no comments or findings that we've uncovered during the audit. So like I said, that was a very quick run-through. I'd be happy to go back to any pages or sections if there is any questions.
Anybody have any questions? I see none, sir. Easy.
Piece cake. All right. If there are some at a later time, I know I went through this pretty quick, feel free to get ahold of me.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
And if anybody would like a hard copy, just let me know because we do print a few hard copies, but not many since we just send PDFs. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks. Number two, request for approval of bike and pedestrian element of the 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Ms. Ellis.
I was going to introduce the NPO's consultant on this plan. And then this is just preliminary approval of the plan as part of our Metropolitan Transportation Plan. If we don't hear or see any noticeable changes between the draft and the final, we will bring this forward in July for final approval with a resolution. So I'll turn it over to who's on?
It's John and Raymond from Bolton and May.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thanks, Nancy. Good evening. This is, this is John Cock with Bolton and May. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. Well, we're pleased to be here with you this evening. We have, we're going to make this presentation, try to keep it to 10 minutes or less, and then look forward to taking your questions. And so we give you a high-level overview and then have time for discussion, we hope. And apologies in advance, we have the, the date wrong on this, but we are presenting to multiple organizations in the region. The plan was done, and I'm trying to move to the next slide. We'll provide an overview of the project and then some of the process and the recommendations, and then have some time for discussion. Just as a bit of preface, the plan was done with funding from the NPO and the municipal partners, of which you all are one, Minnesota DOT and North Dakota DOT and many other local partners were participants in the plan, including folks from, from East Grand Forks staff, as well as the greenway there. And with the input from, from our steering committee and the public, came up with this vision statement for bicycling and walking in the region, that it would be safe and year-round, comfortable, enjoyable, convenient, and for people of all ages and abilities. And then the set of six guiding principles to support that vision, improving safety, improving mobility, increasing the rates of people walking and biking in the region, replacing vehicle trips, developing for community needs, and investing wisely. Just a bit about some of the information that we used to develop the recommendations. We looked at demographics for how people travel in the region currently. And so some of that went into, to our findings and our recommendations. The good news is lots of folks with, with short commutes in the region, which are trips that, you know, at different points of the year, could be replaced with biking and walking in some conditions. We also did some, some touring of the region, got input from different stakeholders about issues in the region. And just a few highlights here, there are people in the region who don't have access to, to vehicles as a means of transportation, and 40% of the region are households that have access to only one vehicle. And then we also know that there are different types of, as we're thinking of cyclists, different types of cyclists, folks who do it for sport and high intensity, and, and others who are much more cautious and prefer to be on a quiet street or a greenway or a side path. But a great number of people would like for biking and walking in the region to be more comfortable. We also looked at crashes in the region and crashes involving people walking and biking, reported crashes, that is, where they were happening. And, and that helped inform some of our project prioritization. The good news is, you know, that there, that your region is safer than many, but, but any fatalities and injuries are too many, and so we want to reduce those wherever possible. And the plan was informed by community input. We had over 700 comments through different venues, an advisory committee made up of people from around the region, open houses. We had online forums, digital surveys, et cetera, et cetera, and got lots and lots of very good feedback, which informed our recommendation. 95% of the folks who participated support more walking, investment in walking and biking. Nearly 90% would prefer to live in more walkable and bikeable neighborhoods in the region. And less than 50% said that greater Grand Forks, the region, was not good for biking and walking now. So that means you all are starting from a fairly good place. But people, there are some people, some things that people would like, better ways to cross the river, better east-west connections, signage and wayfinding, better pavements and things like that, better ways to cross the railroads. Other big topics of concern to the public, general safety, traffic congestion, wanting to be fiscally responsible with investments in, in the region and in the communities, making sure that the network is complete and planned so that people can connect on different facilities across the communities, and being prepared for, for growth, both in the, in the infrastructure and being prepared for new growth and investment as it comes to your communities, and making sure that the priorities and the project implementation reflect community values. We also had some special public input on some priority corridors in each of the two municipalities. And we'll tell you a little bit about those, those priority corridors in a little bit. But these are some areas where, where you all will have some choices to make about when and, and how to invest. So in addition to the public input, we also looked at some factors that influenced where people want and need to walk and bike, and, and both in terms of people who need, who tend to walk more, either because of lower income needs, being a senior citizen, where people work, and, and sort of the condition of the network for, for feeling comfortable walking and biking. And so with, with all of that analysis, with the public input, with reviewing your existing plans, the, the entire sort of long-range network, which will be incorporated into the long-range transportation plan, includes 130 miles of recommended facilities, which includes 18 miles of new sidewalks, 27 miles of new on-street bike facilities, 85 miles of off-street trails, which could include a wide side path on, on the side of a road or a trail in an independent right-of-way, and then crossing improvements to support all of those investments. The plan also includes a design guide for implementation that can be used by your, in your capital planning investment, but also as you are working with developers to implement projects. Again, the plan does include some recommendations for types of crossings and pedestrian facility types, as well as a range of on-street cycling facilities that are based on the types of streets and speeds and volumes on those streets, as well as facilities that are separated from the roadway, whether it be a shared-use path, like your greenway, or a cycle track or a side path along the side of a road. This is an example from the design guidelines, which is something that could be incorporated into your development ordinances. The plan includes recommendations for helping improve walking and biking access to schools. And we had a subcommittee as part of the plan that was just focused on that and includes recommendations in that arena. And so finally, we had to prioritize the, the universe of recommendations. We developed with the steering committee, a set of prioritization factors, which are shown on this screen here, which take into account some of the, the analysis factors, but also some of the things that we heard from the public. And so we came up with a range of what we're calling priority projects, things that, that you all might want to consider in the near term for funding and implementation. 11 projects along seven corridors for the city of Grand Forks, 13 projects in nine corridors for East Grand Forks. Those priority projects are a mix of walking and biking infrastructure, and sometimes they are projects that serve both in the case of, you know, where it might be a shared-use path on the side of a road. So in East Grand Forks, some of those priorities include River Road and Reinhardt Drive, for example. We, we did high-level cost estimates for, for those priority projects, which will assist your staff in developing capital plans for implementation. And then also included in the plan, a series of policy and programmatic recommendations that will help support your infrastructure investments and, and create and improve culture, the culture of walking and biking. And these are things like events, evaluation and planning of the infrastructure that you do, put in educational events, those kinds of things. And so hopefully it didn't go over time, but we would be happy to take your questions and look forward to your feedback on, on the plan.
We reviewed all the schools. That was just one example on the slide deck. Yeah.
It's standing. I, I'm not hearing questions if there are any, so.
Oh, the only question, can you hear me right now?
Yes, I can hear you.
The only question we've gotten so far was, why was only one school looked at on the East Grand Forks side? And I said that was just an example from the slide deck that you had in the presentation.
That's correct.
Yep, all schools were looked at.
Does anyone else have anything? I see none, so no questions.
Do we need a motion?
Not this meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, John.
Thank you to all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Raymond.
Have a good evening.
You, too.
Thank you.
And number three, review bid results for Lefay Park Improvement, Mr. Emery and Ms., Mr. Hutton.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we opened the Lefay Park project on May 31st. We see the total of two bids, bids from Stratocorporation and RJ's Everland Sons. The apparent low bidder was Stratocorporation in the amount of $1,957,594.95. The low bid did come in about 50% above my estimated cost. The second bid from Zavos was about 20% higher than even the low bid, which again is even kind of surprising. I think just to not see, you know, more competitive bids between the two contractors. So again, as I, I mean, as I reviewed the bids, you know, a lot of the bids, you know, were above my estimate. There were some that were, you know, below. You know, again, just surprising as I looked at it, you know, there was, I think, probably a half a dozen bid items that, you know, really kind of jumped out at me, that there was just a, you know, a huge discrepancy between contractors. You know, one example that really jumped out at me was just the precast concrete planks for the boat dock. You know, I'd, I'd estimated about $113,000. Stratoc coming in $131,000, and Zavos $441,000. It's just, you know, I don't know what's going on, why, why we have such a variance. But I think it's, you know, kind of where we're at right now in the bidding environment. I know Croxton had a project to bid last week. Estimate was 1.8 million, came in at 2.8 million. So just, numbers right now are just really inflated, it seems. So I did give you just kind of a snapshot of the total project cost, again, just using the low bid number, you know, what all of the engineering. project cost, again, just using the low bid number, you know, what all of the engineering, construction costs would be, engineering, construction-related costs, and then I threw in a five percent contingency. So, you know, we'd be looking at about a total project cost of about two point two million. The funding was for eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, roughly. If I remember that right, that funding was an eighty-twenty split, eighty percent, eighty percent funding, twenty percent local or whatever. And then the funding did not cover, I believe, any of the engineering costs. So, I mean, the city knew there would be some local match there, but, you know, we're definitely way above what we anticipated. But I think with that, I'm going to let Reed kind of give a little bit of an update on the funding.
Thank you, Steve, counsel. The grant application that we received the funding from is administered through the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission. In their criteria, when you make an application, you can go as low as a zero percent local match, all the way up to as high as you want. And it's based on a scoring criteria. So when we submitted our application in 2021, we committed to a twenty-five percent match. That's the lowest percent match that gives us the highest score in the scoring criteria when you make an application. So twenty-five percent match, and the grant will pay for up to nine percent of engineering fees, engineering and design. So there's a little bit of additional engineering that we would have had to cover on top of that. The same rules, talking about how to fund the rest of this project and try to be able to make this thing happen, we do have an opportunity to go back to the same fund again and ask for more dollars. As Mr. Emery referenced with the project in Crookston, we're seeing this everywhere. And across the state of Minnesota, we're seeing these projects come in higher than anticipated everywhere. There's another project for a park in Red Wing, Minnesota, that was funded the same year as our park that recently opened bids, and theirs were also fifty percent higher than what they were awarded. So the good news is, is that the state level, through this fund, it's funded by the Legacy Fund, there's more money available this coming grant cycle than there's ever been. And sixteen and a half million, roughly, available through Greater Minnesota. So there is an opportunity, there is an interest at the commission level, Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails Commission, to make sure that projects that are already awarded, like ours, that are coming short on funding, can still find the funds necessary to make them happen. So in order for us to be able to do that, we would need to submit an application in the same practice we did in 2021. The application deadline is July 31st of this summer. So we've got time to do that. We're prepared to do that. We have all the information we need. It's just a matter of submitting it. When it comes to a local match, that's a question I do not have a real clear answer on yet, and I don't know that I will, I won't have an exact answer, because it's up to this commission to determine. But I have a general feedback. There may be some appetite at the commission level that we would come with additional local funds at the same degree that we came with the first go-round. That's not a spoken, voted-on stance of the entire commission, but it's, it was mentioned by a couple of commissioners at the last meeting. From my perspective, I would say, just understanding where we're at locally, I would say we already had committed more than twenty-five percent to the total cost of the project. We committed to twenty-five percent in the grants, but there are some elements of the project that they came back to us and said were not eligible funds or not eligible expenses. One example would be the softball fields. We were going to add ADA sidewalks to get up to those fields. Those are not eligible because they won't fund a sports complex. They fund natural preservation. So I think we could cite items like that and say that really our total investment to this was more like thirty-four percent of what the anticipated total project was. I think we go to them in the good faith that that's how much we have to put forward to this project, and we ask the commission to make up the remainder of the total project we have. The last thing to note on it is timing of the funds. This application cycle we're in now is for fiscal year 2025. So we would apply at the end of July deadline. We would receive word back from the commission sometime in the last quarter of this year that we get additional funds or don't. So we would, we would need to go back for, to rebid this project in the end of '23, first part of '24. And then any additional funds, one of two things will happen. And it depends on, a little bit to a degree, depends on what the total statewide application dollar amount is. We would either have our current DNR contract amended, and the dollars would be available in the same timeframe the current ones are. So they would need to be spent by the end of June of '25. That's one scenario. The other scenario would be is that they would be fiscal year '25, state of Minnesota dollars. They wouldn't be available to us until after July 1st of '24, with an expiration of June 30th of 2027. So those are kind of all the details. But I do think we have a real opportunity to be able to go back and apply for the missing funds and still be able to see this project through.
So let's say we have to go back to them, and let's say they magically double what we wanted, and we're at two point two million. So we have to come up with, you know, five, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Originally, we're looking at, what, three twenty, three fifty, roughly? So we have to look for another two hundred thousand dollars to put toward this then, if the, if the numbers don't go down. If we're looking at, what do you put in here?
We, I think I see it, Mr. Olsted, the other way. And maybe I could have said that more clearly. The, the project that we received funding on when we applied in 2021, I can't remember what our total score was, but we received a total score of, let's say, eighty-seven out of a hundred. And of the total score, eighty-seven out of a hundred, fifteen points of that was because we were going to match twenty-five percent. If we lower our match percent to, let's say, between fifteen and twenty percent, we would lose three points on the total of an eighty-seven. I don't think that would put us in a place that we would fall out of a funding, a level that they would fund us. So that's an, one option is to up our ante and still stay at that twenty-five percent. We're not required to do so. We could say, we have three hundred and twenty thousand to commit to this. That's our number. Will you make up the difference? And if that means it's a seventeen percent match, or whatever the number is, I haven't done that math, we'd still be eligible to receive funding. It's just a matter of where we fall in their scoring.
Even at two point two, you're looking at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, roughly, at twenty percent.
Yeah.
And if I understand it right, Reed, excuse me, you are suggesting there is a chance to just go with our exact same dollar commitment that we've already made, even to that higher total package. So you're not necessarily saying it's got to be a magical twenty percent. You're saying there would be a way to go forward with the exact same dollar, bottom-line dollar that we've committed, and request the additional funds.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. Yeah. There are some, some programs across the state that have been funded with a less than five percent match, and they receive full funding on their application. So it wouldn't be out of the norm for the commission to award something like that.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Reed?
Reed, is there any areas we can cut on this if we don't get the funding?
Yeah, I would say so, yes. We haven't, Mr. Emery and I haven't had a real detailed discussion about that. We've talked in short about potentially needing to phase the project. But really, I would break this into three different, this project into three different categories. Number one would be the boat ramp and parking area.
It'd be priority.
Number, that'd be the top priority in my mind. Number two, the, the street improvements that go between the softball fields. And then the third being kind of the excavation and the green space that goes from the parking lot to the fork and the river. That's probably the smallest dollar amount of the three phases, but I would really break it into those three elements if we got to that point.
Just curious if we maybe have that ready and just in case?
So we would, we would separate, I think, next, next. That option, once we get bids to award, you know, one proposal, two alone, or all three of them, you know, we'd have a little more flexibility.
Thank you.
Mr. Elms?
Thank you, Mr. President. That kind of answered some of my, what I was, what I was thinking about is the fact that we might have to cut back. I said it the last time on bids, and I'm going to say it again. I don't think we can continue releasing these bids out there when they're so inflated like they are. We owe it to our people to be a little bit more conscientious on that. And I don't think we can continue doing it that way. We got to stop someplace. And if that, we have to, if that means cutting back a little bit and doing, like you said, Reed, I think I would agree with the boat ramp. I know how bad that is. I agree that it needs to be done. And maybe that's what we need to do is just look at that, because regardless of how much money we're getting, it's still coming from the people. We need to keep that in mind. Somebody's paying that bill, and that's our duty to do that. So, thank you.
If I understand correctly, however, we are receiving a recommendation to reject all bids and see if we can get some more competitive bids into the winter cycle of bidding. And I think that's a really good approach. I think we can spread what dollars we have over all three of these phases and probably get a better price, and then give us the chance to acquire some more funds also. I'd hate for it to go on just the boat launch. I think we can hopefully still get all three by one scenario or the other, the lower bid, some additional dollars.
Mr. Better?
Mr. President, is the grant that we were approved allow us to scale it back?
Not without getting approval of a change in scope. Yeah. The DNR grant has a specific dollar amount that was tied to our estimate, tied to each kind of scope part of the project. So the boat ramp and parking lot has a specific price. The road has a specific price. If we needed to use road funds on the boat ramp part of it, we would need to get approval from the DNR to do so.
Anybody else have any questions? See none?
Thank you.
Thank you. Number four, consider purchase of jetter truck. Mr. Sturdahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. So one of our staff was in an accident with our jetter truck this past winter, late in February. And it was a rollover accident. There was a bunch of ice. And the way the jetter truck is set up, the water sits up fairly high in front of the truck. So it's a little top-heavy. And what happened was he was coming around a corner where there was, there was ice. It was just the right temperature where it was fairly slick that day. The truck slid, caught dry pavement, and tipped, tipped on its side. Our insurance company deemed it a total loss. They valued the truck at forty thousand, which I think was a pretty reasonable, fair price. The city elected to buy back the truck for eight thousand, and we repurposed it into a water truck and a brine truck. We are looking at making ourselves an easement machine out of one of our UTVs, because there's sewers in backyards on some of the, some of the properties. And we can't get back there currently. We always have to hire somebody to do that. So with the old hose reel and some of the other parts, we're going to try to do that with that portion. If council approves this tonight, the recommendation is to sell the pump that's on that truck, something that we couldn't use moving forward. So after buying back the truck and after deductible, the city was given thirty-one thousand dollars from the insurance company. We had budgeted as a city three hundred thousand for the 2025 budget to purchase a new jetter truck. It was coming to the end of its life. Talking with the finance director, we have adequate funds in order to purchase a jetter truck out of our enterprise fund, wastewater enterprise fund. We priced out a truck and demoed a truck through Flexible Pipe Tool Company, and through Sourcewell Pricing, came up with two hundred and ninety-three thousand, eighty-five, twenty-five for a truck. So I'm asking the council to declare surplus for trade the water pump from the old truck and purchase a new jetter truck from Flexible Pipe Tool Company. Maybe a little bit more information is, this truck is used to jet any kind of plug sewers that we have anywhere in this town, any of our mains. That might have something in it. We also use a jetter truck when in the springtime, we typically wash out the gland seals on the bridges. We might use it to cut ice or break that free. We use it in areas that receive floodwaters like the DNR park and anything on the wet side of Levy that we have to jet mud in the spring. So far, we've had to contact either Grand Forks or another contractor, four times that I know of since, since this happened, where we had immediate need. And when we need it, we need it quick typically, too. So, so far, it's worked out. We've been able to get things freed up. You know, if Grand Forks can help us, that's great. Sometimes they can't help us because they're doing their own work, so. The truck that we specked out is very similar to our old truck. It's pretty much a standard setup. The only thing different would be we have an extra four hundred feet of hose, so we could go two manhole lengths in some cases instead of one when we're jetting. The setup is a little bit different. Just, it's just a little bit better setup, more convenient to use. And they do have, or we specked on, on there a camera. A lot of times, we can't tell what's in the pipe, if there's something protruding in there, other than a clog. The technology's been around for about eight years, and the people that have those type of camera heads on there have had little to no problems with them over the eight years. We're also able to take that video footage. It's not as clear as the stuff we have televised, but it's pretty clear. And we can actually upload that so we can see it on our GIS system as well. So if we jet an area, we can show that, oh, there was roots there, or there was this there in 2024. What does it look like now? Or if there's a crack in a pipe, you know, we could maybe determine that. So I think that's about all I have unless somebody has questions.
Mr. Elms?
You know, I had that written down. I think it was a 2004. I don't. I'm sorry, Mr. Elms. I can get it for you, but I don't know if there was on it. There was quite a few hours on the truck.
See, I can't believe it had a lot of miles. I guess what I'm going with it is that, to me, it sounds like we accepted a pretty small check for a truck that got pulled out for what the price of a new is.
Actually, we did not. The truck itself is the cheapest part of the whole thing. The price that we got when we looked is very fair. If you were going to buy a truck of that, depends on what you were going to have on it, I guess, but it is a very fair price. And we actually looked at just purchasing a new, you know, pump and jetter system in the back, and it just wasn't feasible to do. It wouldn't make sense, because the truck, even though it's not that old, it has a lot of hours on it. There's a lot of wear and tear on it, and it's just really not fit probably for any other use than what we're doing with the water truck and the brine truck. So it wouldn't make sense to put all that money on top of an old truck like that and replace the chassis in just a few years on the road. So that's how we came up with that.
So what you're saying is, is that the insurance check was for the chassis only? Did it not damage the, the back or?
It was for all, but the truck itself is not worth very much. Even the new truck in this price was that, there was a larger percentage of that price that stuck into the actual jetter equipment than the truck itself. So the truck itself, yeah, there's not a lot of value to it. If you look at it, I can get you those years and stuff.
I agree that you need one, but I'm just, I'm just, it just sounded like that was pretty cheap.
No, it's.
For what the price of a brand-new truck is. For what the price of a brand new truck is, that you would have thought that that check should have been a little higher, I guess is where I was going with it.
No, actually, I think we did really well. We were thinking we'd probably come in somewhere in the twenties, maybe high twenties, lower thirties when we got it. So I think what we got was very reasonable from the ones that we looked at.
Thank you.
We'll go to Mayor first and then Mr. Larson.
Jason, I remember years ago when we did citywide jetting, we would contract that with another service. Do we still contract the bigger part of our jetting? And then this is for kind of the spot work that we do?
Yeah, we, we contract a fifth of the city each year for annual jetting. This is just for spot work. The fifth of the city actually gets to be more like a quarter of the city, which is recommended by the League of Minnesota Cities, because we also hit troubled areas every year. So it ends up being more like a quarter. But yes, this is just for spot stuff, emergency type work or flood type work or stuff like that. Anything really that, anywhere around the city, we need high pressure water, we, we use a jetter.
This in use, just curious, the old one, remember when we had the overland stuff up on the north end in that spring thaw? And then we found some areas that had problems. Were we able to get in and start popping those open to get the, the water to move?
Wherever we could, yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, Mr. Strodahl, when you hire this out to a contractor, what is the hourly rate that you typically pay?
It really varies, but just to get them here, a lot of times, it'll be anywhere from eleven hundred to fifteen hundred dollars just mobile fees. And then it's per the hour after that.
Do you know what the hourly rate is?
I don't offhand.
Just trying to back into a number here to understand, you know, are we better off to contract this service out or buy the truck and pay an employee to be in that truck? I think that would be an important analysis I'd like to see.
Yeah, I think the biggest concern here about trying to contract it out is just the essence of time.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, something's flooding. You need it right away.
Right. Yep. Somebody's basements are backing up, you know, you need it.
Are these contractors like a Jetway or a Roto-Rooter, are they typically available 24/7 for an emergency call?
A lot of times they are. Roto-Rooter really isn't equipped to handle anything that we, we have, I guess. But Jetway has stepped in when they could. Sometimes we have, and Jetway may or, you know, may not be able to do it. Like I said, Grand Forks will assist us when they can. Sometimes we have to get up. We work with pipe detectives on Fargo quite a bit. And then even down by Alexandria, Elbow Lake area, there's a contractor we work with there a lot to jetline. And they're, they're all pretty good about coming up. But then again, that's an hour or two hours to get here, just drive time, let alone getting to the truck, getting, you know. So and when our operators come in, it's, we're looking at from the call time to getting to the site, anywhere from, you know, twenty minutes to half an hour. We're ready with water in the truck at all times and, and ready to go. So it's pretty, it's pretty fast. We don't have a whole lot of sewer backups. You know, we might have a call from a resident, maybe it's coming into their sink or their basement tub or something. And we're typically able to get there before there's any damage, you know. But so.
Anything else, sir?
I think just a follow up here, you know, to understand what those rates are would be helpful, you know, when this comes to a vote. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Elms?
Just one more quick question. What kind of timeframe are you thinking of for this time?
We would have it this year. We test, tested one probably about three weeks ago in town here, demoed it. And it's basically the same setup as what we've specked out here. The truck could be here possibly even in July. They weren't a hundred percent sure. They have most of the stuff ready to go, but it would be fairly soon.
Post-nasal might be on back or?
No, no. They, they actually have one with our name on it, reserved. If we don't get it, we don't get it. But they have one for us.
Mr. Potchewinski?
Thank you. Do you know what the last one cost when we bought it? Do we, did we buy it new? Did we get it used?
We bought it new. I don't know the price, but that's something I could get you to, Mr. Perkins.
And then if we buy one, how long should we anticipate its life?
If I'm correct on that, the other one was purchased in two thousand and four. So, you know, twenty, I would say twenty to twenty-five years would probably be a good lifespan on it.
Okay. So we, I know you mentioned that we were looking to replace it in two thousand and twenty-five. Now we're just doing a little bit early?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? See none, sir? Appreciate it. Move on to number five, update discussion items for finance committee. Mr. Vedder?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had lots of discussions in our finance committee. We're looking for direction from the council. What I'm going to do is go through department by department on what our discussion has been. I would ask you that if you have questions, throw them out at me. Don't wait until the end. Just very informal right now.
You want to say, don't shoot the messenger?
Okay. So if we start with police, we talked about dispatch and having the county do our dispatching. The problem there is we contacted the county and they said they aren't able to do our dispatching at this point in time. We are still in some discussion if we can work around and, and maybe not have officers doing dispatching during the day, have other people that are in the police station at the time throughout the day do the dispatching rather than a police officer. We're still having that discussion. The school resource officer is another area that we're talking about. When we get, we're short staffed, we did pull the school resource officer out of the schools and is on the streets. So we haven't been getting income in from the, the school. Discussion is, do we want to continue to have that school resource officer? Do we want to do away with it? That's up for discussion.
Yes, I do have a question on that.
Yep.
Would it be the positive, other than taking him out, cover shifts with the schools? Have we had discussion with the schools of what the benefit we have with that person being in there? Because, you know, I've talked to them in the past, you know, not recently, but have they really think it's a good impact and positive impact with the schools and in with the students? I think it's, that's one of the things I think if, if that gets looked at, I think it really needs to get looked at and really understood of the huge impact it'll have on the schools and the students.
I agree. So I'll let the chief discuss.
The steps, it isn't anything I put out there lightly, but we're basically tasked with looking at services because that's, that could potentially affect. And in our department, if you're going to cut services, you're going to cut personnel. That's about the only way to do it in reality. I certainly don't want to lose the school resource officer position. I have yet to talk to anybody in the school district. There might be somebody out there, but I haven't talked to anybody that isn't very positive about that position and wants to keep it. You know, everybody, all the principals that I spoke to is now departing as the superintendent, but I think he was very pro with that position as well.
I think a lot of teachers really appreciate him coming in, doing presentations. I know that, that he's always had great feedback. I think Mr. Gunnerson's done a great job and kids really are comfortable going up to him. I think, well, even if it's not him, maybe it's somebody else that does that down the road. But I'm just, I think it's been a good addition to have those, that officer in the schools. I think it sends that message that we do care more than, you know, with having him there.
Yeah.
I think it's, does help.
I do think it's a very valuable position. I don't want to lose it, but we're, we're kind of looking at, at all options at this point.
I just wanted clarification.
And I know with my contact with the school at home, she's adamant too that they would, they really miss the resource officer at the middle school when he's not there. One option is maybe approaching the school district to see if they'll pick up more than fifty percent of the, of the position to be able to keep that in the schools. I mean, that, that's an option that we haven't explored yet.
That'd be my question too, is because, you know, this year, within the budget, isn't there a safer school? Are there some funds that are maybe available for safe schools?
The various law enforcement agencies in the school districts throughout our county are involved in a, a grant for some primarily training. I don't know that it would pay anything for this. If there's something else out there, I'm not aware of it.
Well, he's touting every other minute on Twitter and everything else, what he's done to, for the kids in his state and.
Yeah. There might be something there that I'm just not aware of. That's, that's very possible.
Those are the two areas that we've been talking about with the police department. On fire, we can eliminate the rescue service. If we eliminate the rescue service, the fee goes away on the water and light bill. The bottom line is the fee that we're collecting more than pays for the rescue service that we have currently. So if we give it up, we're going to lose money. The other option is going to a voluntary fire department. And if we go that route, everyone's insurance rates go up. And there's other items that get affected also. So there isn't a lot that we can do on the fire department side either. EDA, the consensus was to eliminate the director position. If we do it sooner, if we eliminate the position, and if we eliminate any positions, there would be unemployment that we have to pay. We're self-employed, self-paying unemployment. So there's a cost behind that. So if we eliminate the position earlier and say if we eliminated August of this year, some of that cost is more in two thousand and twenty-three. So we have a greater savings than in two thousand and twenty-four. If we wait until January first, we don't have as much of a savings in two thousand and twenty-four because we're paying that unemployment all in the one year. Streets, only thing we've talked about in the streets is eliminating a position. We don't know where it might be, whether it's the secretary, whether it's a, one of the workers. There isn't a lot of favor to eliminating any positions. With everything that's going on with accounting, we've got one accounting position open in finance. Water and Light has got a retirement coming. That may be in, an area that we could just look at overall, what do we want to do with accounting? And maybe there might be some efficiencies between streets, water and light and our admin department there.
Question for you, Clarence. Would that be like a central finance department that would, you know, like shared services?
Shared services, cross-training. So if one's absent, the other, someone else can jump in.
Sure.
When we were admin, we've been looking at HR position might be able to be combined in with some others. But again, with one open position there and with the retirement and water and light, that whole area, I think, needs to be looked at on how we want to manage that and how it would be paid for. I mean, part of it could be paid out of water and light then for some of our other service departments. That was one of the things that streets and Jason kept saying is that a lot of his stuff isn't paid out of the general fund budget. A lot of it's paid out of sewer fund and those other proprietary funds. Planning and zoning, planning and zoning is looking at whether we want to have our own engineer on staff and whether that would save us money or break even. If we have our own engineer, then it may be, we may get, might get a better bang for our buck to get because there's no profit motive behind there. No offense against you guys, you got to make your profit. But if they're working for the city, they don't have the profit in mind. They're saying, what's the best thing for the city at this point in time? They might be able to work closer with other departments and you don't get charged specifically for every hour then that's on there. So there may be extra hours that are available for our city staff to tap into.
Do we have a cost estimate of what it would charge to have an engineer on staff?
We'll leave it to Nancy.
We do. And both Jason and I worked on this because civil engineering is definitely a public works and a planning and zoning type of a, a position. We both work with him equally. We have some information on what we were charged last year versus a city of similar size. And we looked at, at a number of them. Just so you're aware, Thiefer Verkrusten, Grand Rapids, Fergus Falls, Alexandria, all contract for engineering services. Bemidji's the only one that's similar in size, that's near our location, and they have four engineering positions on staff. And then what we did, that cost is actually higher than what we were charged from our engineering services last year. And then it was broken out into general engineering costs, which I would consider administrative, which is what Clarence was referring to. There are some benefits to having someone in, in-house. Any types of plat review, studies, meetings, those types of things would be what we would consider administrative costs. And then large project costs, which even in Grand Forks, a majority of their engineers are just administratively engineering. They're reviewing plans, they're reviewing projects, they're doing some inspections, but they're not actually preparing the documents. They're hiring out those engineering. So, you know, it, it really, we're not going to see much of a savings. And I have information for all of you that you can take home. So as far as combining it with building inspections, that was discussed, I'm just going to do this. There's two pages. It was discussed at one point in time and civil engineering and building inspections really don't fall into the same field. I would see civil engineering very much more of a, like a road, bridges, those type of projects, maybe even some large building construction, but not really looking at the building inspection part of it at all. That would, we're noticing more cities are hiring construction managers who are near retirement, don't want to be on a construction site as much as they were before or weren't working year round. The other type of building inspectors we've seen are through fire departments. So they're both busy at the same time. So again, combining engineering and, and building inspections for me would, would not be a, a good option. So. And then as far as my department, anything else, we do have, we taken enough in building inspections. That does cover our contract for our building inspections as well as pay for a portion of our building tech. A majority of, I have a, a part-time employee at Sunshine Terrace. I have Sonny who's paid for maintenance through Sunshine Terrace. A portion of my salary is paid to, for through Sunshine Terrace. So really, we don't have a full-time employee that's paid for solely through the general fund. So. And then if anybody has any questions.
Are you saying on here, the four seventy-nine does not include any larger projects that?
Nope. So they, they could actually be paying additional if it's a very large project that they can't get to.
The, the larger projects would more than likely be special assessed though, correct?
It depends. Because like our federal, like federal aid or our city sub-target dollars, those ones would probably be a larger project or a bridge or if we were to receive highway safety improvement dollars. There's a lot of different programs out there that is funded that would include state or federal dollars that oftentimes the scope of the project's quite large. Now, that doesn't mean that our in-house engineer couldn't do that. I would expect our, if we had an in-house engineer, they would probably be doing more of the special assess, like local streets. And the larger projects would be anything that would involve state or federal dollars. So.
I guess I would like to know, I mean, let's say year of two thousand and twenty-two, you know, you're showing their salaries and benefits here, but we don't really know what they actually paid out for larger projects that they had. You know, maybe there's, they have an average over the last couple of years. I don't know. I mean, is it true total cost to them? Five hundred thousand? Or was it six hundred thousand? Is it seven? I don't know. That's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to go, go, you know, weigh them together. So.
And I, I'm very limited on the larger projects because I don't deal with them on the same basis that Jason would when it comes to street and highway.
I just want to make sure we're, you know, you can show apples and oranges and it looks great. You know, that's why I'd like to know.
So I think, sorry.
Oh, no, you go.
I spoke with the city clerk, the assistant engineer and the engineer in Bemidji and spoke with them about it. They gave me a lot of information. That's probably something I probably could get you, Mark, is what they had for two thousand and twenty-two. I wanted that information, but I don't think you're ever going to get really close to apples to apples just because the projects are so different, you know. But, but what the, the lead or the head city engineer was saying was that, you know, their water projects, whether it be wastewater or drinking water, they don't engineer any of those projects. Any kind of specialty stuff they don't do. But year to year, depending on how many larger projects they have, I mean, some years they might do almost all the larger projects. In other years, they. they might do almost all the larger projects, and other years, they might not. I asked him specifically on federal projects, he said there too, it's, sometimes they do it, sometimes they hire an engineer to do it. So it's, it really just depends on how much work they have for that particular year. But I can look through that stuff and see if that's, if he, and if he didn't, they're really willing to share any information with us that they have.
Do they have a ten-year average of what they have, you know?
Sure.
Yeah, we can, we can ask for that.
Yeah.
See, and the idea behind it, let's just look at Le Fay Park today. Engineering that, for that project alone, was $95,000, and part of that's paid by the grant fund. So if we had a city engineer set salary and did that project, part of that, his salary would have been paid by grant funds then. Same way we'd go with mill and overlays, if they're doing that whole project, everything that we get special assessed for engineering in that project then, comes back to offset his salary.
Mary, you have something?
Well, I was just thinking back to Grand Forks, and if we had an idea, what percentage of their bigger projects they had to farm out, that could give us that insight also.
I think Grand Forks farms them all out, don't they?
They farm all of them out, yep.
Yep, so it's obviously, yeah, somewhere between those two extremes. But yeah, if you could get the actual numbers, that would average out over several years, that'd be great.
We move to library. We talked about regional library, and the bottom line is, if we go to a regional library, yes, we're going to save money, but our services drastically get reduced. All the staff then becomes the staff of the regional library system. They dictate what programs will be run, what hours at the library will be open, and so forth, and so forth. So our services in the library would be drastically cut if we went to a regional library system. We would save money though. We also talked a little bit about eliminating a library position, but we'll kind of hang on to that one when we talk about parks and rec. So if we move to parks and rec, one of the things we talked about was turning figure skating, baseball, softball, hockey, over to the clubs, and just let the clubs run it, so we don't have any of those expenses. The clubs, Reid did look, reach out to the clubs, and they said, you know, we'd be open to that, but there's no way we could do it within the next year, we'd have to get our things up and running and in place before we could take it over. That whole discussion led to, let's review our rates, and get an idea of what the clubs would have to charge just to break even if we rented them ice time. The rent then would cover our staff to maintain the buildings, but the cost to go to their programs would significantly go up. And the discussion was, is there favor with the council to raise our rates to match what the clubs would have to charge to take over the programs? And thus increase money coming into the park district to offset their costs. And wondering if there's any appetite for that with the council members.
Mr. Riappel.
I saw it done in Crookston, it became a disaster, as you can tell, in their hockey program. Absolutely a disaster. Grand Forks has done it, the Blue Line Club and the Youth Hockey Association run it, but the park board is very instrumental in it, and they're, they are putting funds into it. So I don't think we'd see a total cut of our funds there, we're going to still see something. I'm kind of hesitant on it, but hey, if they think they can run it, let them run it. I don't think they can.
Do you have a sense for like the magnitude of cost increase? Is it like, the cost for hockey would double or triple? I'm just curious where we're at.
Yeah, good question. I can share a doc, the document I put together with everybody too, but just kind of generalizing, Mr. Larson, in like a hockey and figure skating world, this was, I think, a really good exercise to do, probably the deepest dive we've ever taken at our recreation fees. But in a general sense, historically, like for a squirt or a 10U hockey player, we've been charging in recent years, say, in that $350 for the season area. We found that our actual cost to run that program is more like about $400 per skater. Comparatively though, as you get older, the cost to run the program goes up quite dramatically. Trying to find the right spreadsheet here as an example. A Bantam hockey player, so that's our 13 and 14-year-old age group, our cost last year to run that program per skater was about, about $1,050. We charged each person 650.
Why is it so much more?
A lot more ice time, and we pay coaches. At the squirt, 10U level and below, we typically have volunteer coaches. As we get, start to get into pewees, we have a little bit more of a mix of some paid coaches, some parents, and at the Bantam or 15U level, both in the figure skating and in the hockey side, it becomes much more of all the coaches are paid. That combined with a lot more practice time on the ice as you get older, makes the cost go up pretty dramatically. So in a lot of ways, even need to look at what we were, what we've been charging for fees. You know, some of our younger programs almost have been overpaying for what they get in comparison to a cost per hour of ice, in comparison to our older, older kids. So the figure skating level is very similar to that, like our, our Snowplow Sam, Synchro skaters, that's our youngest level of a synchro team, our cost per skater last year was $254. We charged $55 for them. That's very entry level, just trying to get kids on the ice. The next age group up from that, the aspire beginner team, we charged 430, our cost to do it was 428. Comparatively though, you go up to the open juvenile team, or of the high school age, we still only charged 430. Our cost per skater was $1,068. So those numbers all add up. In the ice world itself, you know, as I looked at it proposed, let's, let's charge the appropriate dollar amount to cover our costs at every level, our proposed revenues, using last year's registration numbers, could go from 133,200 to 234,170.
That's jumping all the way to breaking even.
That's jumping all the way in one year to breaking even, yeah.
And has the committee discussed more of a gradual, you know?
No, we have not.
Okay, you know what I'm saying though, like, work your way there.
Yeah. And I think the last thing, I think it's important to note on that, maybe that's a little bit to Mr. Riappel's point, that is using, I went through the entire ice season and looked at how many hours of programmable, schedulable ice we have, and how many hours the ice rink operates. Our cost to operate the ice plant on a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week cycle, the cost to do that is $48 an hour. So Grand Forks charges their lease this year to their youth programs was $55 an hour for ice, that's the number I used, is $55 per hour. Our cost to run the arena, in the hours it's open, schedulable open, schedulable rentable ice, it rises to about $110 an hour. So there's another price I looked at, of if we're charging what it actually costs for that hour of ice, the lights are on, this building is staffed, it goes up even higher than that. But this price I've shown is, is on par with what Grand Forks is paying, like what a Thiefer Falls is paying, and so forth.
Question for you on the hourly rate, I guess for maybe both of you, is have you looked at like a sliding scale, you know, where the most desirable hour of the day costs more, and the least desirable hour is a bit cheaper?
If we got into a serious conversation, I think, about clubs running the programs, we would look at something like that. I've seen in, in other communities lease agreements that have been shared with me, that they lease with their clubs. They're more on a time-of-year basis, rather than a time-of-day. The October to March timeframe is $55, then when you have off-season, like in June, for example, it's $175 an hour for ice. So it's staggered based on the time of the year.
Yeah. We don't want to introduce a bunch of inequality either into our program, so I was just curious. Okay, thank you.
In your cost analysis, did you take out a little something for other uses in there during that same time, like walkers and others? Did you reduce the hourly fee a little bit for that?
I haven't at this point, no. There could be a way to come up with that, yeah.
We haven't charged our walkers, though, to walk.
Right, but it's still, it's an asset to the community that we're subsidizing on behalf of those walkers.
And I think maybe the quick thought process and answer to that would be, that's maybe where the, the cost of ice is, falls in at that $55 an hour. If we charge that rate, even in our registration fees, we're still, the total deficit to run these facilities is still there. It's going to go from $530,000 a year to $430,000 a year. But we're still operating these buildings at a deficit, even at charging our skaters a more appropriate fee.
I just have a quick question in regards to the figure skating. When you did the number of hours, did you do it just the number of hours per team, or did you include the individual practice times also?
Those, those expense per skaters is team-specific. Yeah, the individual private ice times I ran in a separate calculation.
Sure.
Yeah.
Any questions on that portion? Right, Clarence?
So the other thing that we talked about, don't leave your seat yet, the other thing we talked about with parks was, if we sold the senior center, and looked at moving the programs that they're currently operating, could we move them to the library? And if we did that, then the regional library system would be off the table for sure. And wondering if there's some appetite for that. If we could keep our senior center director, maybe it's kind of a halftime position, and we do some programming with the library, and the library staff over there to pick up some of that, so there may be some cost savings there. Granted, yes, we'd sell the building and bring money in at that, we'd eliminate all the, the expense of maintenance and upkeep of the building. Staff-wise, we might not save anything. We may a little bit, like I say, if we combine it with the library staff and do joint programming, just throwing it out there. I don't know that we've got really dollar figures on that option yet, we're just wondering where everyone sits.
I think we should study it a little bit closer and put some rough order of magnitude savings to it. I'd be interested in it, myself.
Before we go too far down that road, do we have space at the library to incorporate these? Would we try to bring the food service over, or is that going to go away at that point?
That would go away. We would let LLS know that they have to, have to find a different spot.
And, and as far as the space goes, we would have to figure out what programming we would have, and what time of day we would have it, and so, yeah, there's the coordination of what they're used to, and moving them into, you know, a new space, so. I think a lot of their day-to-day kinds of things, we can make work. Reid and I have talked about the space, and, you know, how we might have to make some changes in the building to make sure all of their activities can happen, but that's, that's part of programming.
They're not always quiet.
The library isn't always quiet.
No, I mean, they're seniors, so we're good.
Right, exactly, no. That's all good.
Just to add to that a little bit too, Charlotte and I have had some good conversation about it. We did talk about that there may be some activities that are in, in the senior center now, that just don't fit in the library either, to your point. And that, you know, a quick thought, we have other facilities in this community that are, to the last conversation about ice arenas, that are underutilized at different times in the year too. So I think it's just if we want to go that route, it's being creative. We have the Nash Park Warming House, maybe need a little upfront investment, but that's a great building that sits empty most of the year, the ice arenas themselves, you know, so. As long as we would have the flexibility and the staffing that are flexible to bounce from facility to facility to whatever the activity is, to me, it could still all work.
I wonder if we could ask our seniors, if right now they have their own hangout, their own gathering place, and here they would be dispersed to a few locales throughout the city, would that be a big net negative for them, or could they acclimate to that? And, you know, this activity is here, this activity is there, maybe that would be just fine with them?
We, we have some senior programs that go on at the library right now, or groups that are, have been filled with seniors, and it seems to work really well. And yes, they tell you exactly what they want and what they don't want, so as we, if we were to go forward with something like that, I'm sure we would hear, you know, how best they can be, provided the services that they want.
Did you look at me, Mr. Mayor, for a reason?
Yes.
When you talked about the seniors?
We're all headed that way, bud.
Thank you.
We've already talked about the admin, finance, HR, accounting positions. To finish, I just want to publicly thank all the department heads, they've all been very open and honest, and willing to discuss things, whether it was palatable to them or not, they always brought back useful information, so I do tip my hat to all our department heads for their, their work into this.
Any else, have you any questions or anything?
And I guess I would just ask the department heads, have you heard enough tonight to give direction in our next meeting? Or do you want more direction from anyone?
Go ahead, Ben.
Clarence, do we have any sense yet of like how much we need to come up with?
Carla, what was our last figures, about 400, 500,000?
Thank you, the last figure was at 5%, and we guessed with 10% insurance. We also put in for COLA, we don't know where the salary steps are from the new salary survey that was done, but we were at a negative 480.
So how many of these things do we think we need to do, without, you know, saying we need, we're going to do this one, this one, and this one? Like, does the committee have any recommendation, as to like, we need to do a minimum of like three of these things, or else we're going to, you know, raise everybody's taxes?
The only strong recommendation that the committee has come up with is eliminating the EDA position.
And where does that get us?
I'm looking at you, Carla. I didn't bring my sheets.
Yes, about 380. If, if that's, if we did it before 2024, because then the budget amount could cover the unemployment. So it would be about 100,000 if we did it in 2023.
Has we been talking on who, who would have moved to that? That position, I mean, not full-time, but who would take over that spot?
When I visited with Mr. Grandi about it, and they were open to it, the EDA board, his comment was that, I don't want to say Peggy, but it's.
Brenda.
Brenda. Does most of the work over there, anyway. Then I talked to Paul, and I said, how many people do you have working under you? And he said, I got one, Brenda, does about 90% of the work, according to Grandi. So we have, Brenda's going to continue to do most of it. And that whole position may evolve at some point in time, but most of the programs come down from the state level anyway, and all we do is administer them.
We would probably want to have a department head to whom she would report, so we could just identify that, whatever that might be.
Any else, any questions?
If there's one particular item that the council says, yeah, like the rescue service, nope, we're not doing the rescue service, we're going to keep that, we're not going to look at city engineer anymore. If there's something like that, then we can concentrate our efforts on the other areas and come up with some actual dollar amounts then, to say, you can pick this one, you can pick this one, you can pick that one, nope, I don't want that one. But if you can narrow it, the field down a little bit for the committee, then we'll, we can have better figures for you.
If the rescue service is already covered, why would we eliminate it? I'm just asking. Why is it even on the, why is it even on the list then, if it's already covered? That's, and.
This is the update on, here's everything that we've done so far. I think the committee has agreed that we probably don't want to eliminate the rescue service.
I don't think, especially where we're living, though, I mean.
We were asked just to put a price tag on our services, and that's the best we could do there.
I think even before we have a discussion on engineering, I'd like to have better numbers. I don't think we have the correct numbers to look at to show us what the true value of what in-house is for the cost. I just, and me personally, I would have, without those numbers, I would not recommend going that way, and I would have a tough time doing it anyway. So I think if Mr. Strodahl can get something to us, you know, we can look at, see if we can have.
Maybe we can do, we'll have a, like, a vote sheet come out, here's the things that we talked about, hand it out to all council members, rate your top 1, 2, 3, that, yep, I'm in favor of looking into this one, this one, and this one, and then we can go from there, just to narrow things down a little bit.
Okay, it's fine with me, I mean, if that's what you want to do. I mean, I can tell you, the library is not going to be on with me either. I mean, why would we go from 70-some hours down to 40-some hours and not have control of anything? Can you imagine what program we would have?
None.
I've seen it with where they're at. No. Sorry, but...
Yeah, I have a question, and I just don't know the answer. I think it's an HR question. You know, as we, as we look at org charts and employees under each one of these departments and we start to, you know, put some recommendations together on reducing FTEs, what is that, how does that process work? You know, do we, do we look at some people that are like past their retirement age and draw a circle around that employee and say, okay, that position goes away? I truly don't, don't know how, how we would reduce staff. Curious to get some feedback on that.
Okay. I don't think there's a way that we can look at somebody who's...
You can't discriminate by age, of course.
You eliminate.
I'm just, I'm trying to like spur some conversation on this very difficult thing to talk about. And how does it work with the union? I mean, is there a severance or a buyout? I'm pretty green on this.
Severance is the sick leave we talked about and the other ones, and that's where we came up with guessing 16 people in five years.
Sure.
So, you know, anybody that's, say, that can go on five years because of their age approximate are on the list. So now we have funded for those, so that would not come out of the general fund, the sick leave would come out of that benefits fund 705.
Sure.
So that would, so that when we talk about reducing that, there's, that's still part of the reduction that that would be a cost, but it wouldn't come out of the general fund.
Understood. I'll kind of build on my question. Is there an opportunity to offer an early retirement for some people who are ready for that? Is that something we could discuss? I know that the university went through that a few years ago. I was not involved in those details, but that's a process that has happened across the river.
Guess it'd be up to, if the state would allow us especially go that route, I don't know if it's possible or not.
We did have discussions last year in our budget. That was one of the things we brought up with, with David Murphy on that, you know, just because that's something we haven't looked at. We could look into that deeper, but it just, at that time, we decided not to pursue it.
Sure. Kind of building on that, and one of the reasons I thought of it is, you know, we just reviewed and our reserves are a bit higher than the state recommends for at 54%. So there is some dollars in that reserve if we wanted to use that for, call it a buyout or retirement incentive. Again, I'm throwing, throwing stuff at the wall here, Clarence, but...
We could also use that to, for that 480 to the negative. That's what we have done in the other years is that we decided that we would dig into our fund balance to break even. So, you know, maybe it's a juggle between you do certain positions or other services and some of the fund balance to cover that deficit.
Brian, are you leaning more towards through attrition that we just don't rehire?
That's exactly right. I can only speak from my experience in North Dakota, but we went through this process. There was an incentive for retirements and then we did not refill those FTE positions. It's part of a 12% budget cut we went through in, I think, 2017 or so.
Only problem is that the positions that you might eliminate maybe in a department that you can't handle the elimination, that even if they retired normally, we would have to refill that position anyway.
Yeah.
That would be the hard part.
Yeah. And it was challenging and it, you know, it's just, it's an option out there to consider.
Yep.
Are we doing a hiring freeze or are we just hiring part-timers with no full-time benefits?
None of it's going to be easy.
I know.
So...
We also did discuss that, you know, we haven't checked to see if there is any employees that would maybe want to reduce their hours. We talked about a four-day work week, which more people are doing, other cities are doing just because they can't find employees also is a lot of it. But, you know, we haven't talked, maybe somebody would be willing to go to 75%, you know. So, you know, those are things we could look at, you know, they would still get their benefits, they just, you know, we have some savings.
So 480, 480 is at about 7% or 8% tax levy? What is, what's the 1% right now? Is it, is it?
70,000 or 80?
So at 5%, it's 330,000 would be our levy. So it would be at 10 to get, and still have the 180 left.
So at 5%, at $330,000, that's, that's more than...
So we're at 5% now. We did it 10%. We'd still look at a deficit of 180. And we were just going by with the group one at 5%. So...
Mary, you got something, sir? Sorry.
Yes, sir. As we're aware, we're now operating with an interim city administrator. In past years, when we've negotiated contracts, for example, with engineering and legal, some of that upfront work has been done by our city administrator. We did not want to put that function on to the interim city administrator. So President Olsted and I have met with our city engineer and our city attorney, both, just to do some front-end work to find out if there would be a way to reorganize the contract just slightly and find some savings for the city. And the one we haven't talked about here today is legal. Mr. Gallstead is taking a look at, maybe there would be some cost savings that we can find in terms of, one of the big changes that came out of COVID was a lot of hours of Zoom court, and it's just ridiculous. It's blown up. It's like three, four days of Zoom court, which used to be one or two days of in-person court. So his hours where he has to be available watching Zoom court in case one of his cases comes up are ridiculous. And he may be able to alternate a day, say, with Crookston to save a day here, a week or part of a day a week on the hourly rate that he would have to charge back to us. So he's going to get back to us on that. He also agreed to freeze his hourly rate for a three-year contract. You know, we're six months into a contract for both engineering and legal, which we don't like. Really, we like to ink these things on a multi-year deal before the contract period starts. So President Olsted and I will, we'll just do some of the front-end work. We'll bring, bring it all back to you all. No commitments will be made, of course, without full council approval, but we're just doing the front-end work that Mr. Murphy would have done or say a full-time city administrator. One last thing, which we found out, which is helpful, of course, the rate that Mr. Gallstead charges us is significantly lower than his market rate, just because of the volume of business that we bring to him every single month. And so in some ways, he's being really fair. The hourly rate is very, very good, and if he can find a way to, to share those hours of Zoom court with Crookston, could save us some more. And if he again locks that rate for another term, I think we can come up with a good contract with our, our city attorney.
Any else have anything? See nothing, sir? Nancy?
This is just quick on a side note. You had asked if there was any other state funds that were going to be coming in.
Yeah, I just put in the last session if something came up that maybe Frank has said, here you go.
And just recently, we found out that they're going to be paying, well, I shouldn't say they're going to be paying, but we're going to be at a 5% local match for both of our transit. Where right now, we're at a 20% for our regular route and our 15 for dial-a-ride. Now that should show some savings, however, we're working through the process now because they want to freeze our budget. So what we budgeted for this year would be the same for next year. Grand Forks is also going through a wage study. We're well aware that we're losing CDL drivers to bigger and better wages, so we're going to notice that our bus driver wages are going to go up. Our argument is that they also were given or made flush with some additional funds, and they've increased what they can bring out with motor vehicle sales tax. And so they're getting more funds, they're picking up more funds, and then they got a one-time cash inflow. And our argument is, is you can't freeze our budget. It's supposed to be for two years, that they would make us only pay a 5% local share. So you can't freeze our budget for two years because then after two years, our budget would go up significantly, which would then affect our general budget when they drop it back to 20 and 15. We're also in the argument that all of the counties can collect funds for their transit and they want to make rural, so like all your rural services only have to pay between 5 and 10%. And the counties are picking up taxes for their transit, and yet the cities can't really match that in terms of our riderships and what we're bringing in. We would have to raise our rates and public transit's supposed to be available for anyone who can use it. We don't want to rate ourselves out of not having public transit when it's required by the federal government. So the local urbans right now, which is St. Cloud, Mankato, myself, Duluth, La Crosse, La Crescent, Fargo-Moorhead, we're all kind of gathering and we're going to be working with MINDAT to figure out a way as to why they assume that cities, particularly East Grand Forks as one, that acts more as a rural than it does as an urban, that we're kind of not getting a fair shake of the dollars that other communities are. And so we'll be working in detail with them. So I could say that we may see some savings in transit, but if our budget's frozen, we have to pick up the additional costs that it's going to, you know, that we're going to get charged, so it may be a wash. And so I don't want to budget that money back in, you know, and give us, show us some more revenue only to have us then at the end of the year have to transfer more in because the costs were higher. So I'm going to continue with what we have now, which is in the tip-stip, and then, you know, we may see that additional savings at the end of the year and have a, have a plus again, you know, be in, be in the black rather than at the red, but...
Sure. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Any last have anything? Are you going, are you going to do that thing you want to send out or are you going to handle that?
Yeah, I'll do it. Make it tomorrow to take me out.
Okay.
And you'll check with Bemidji on actuals if we can?
Yep.
Thank you.
All righty. Entertaining motion to adjourn. Move lay veteran.
Second.
Mr. Miller, in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.